Okay, at 6 o'clock, we'll call the Planning Commission regular meeting to order Wednesday, July 20th, or July 15th, I'm sorry, 2020. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'd like to recognize those members that are in attendance this evening, or more particularly the one who's not able to be here this evening. Commissioner Rudd is absent, we acknowledge that. And the first item on our agenda is for public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If an agenda item is also listed as a public hearing, persons may wait to speak until that particular item. And if there are really public comments via telephone, the phone number is 702-589-9629. Yes?
I did receive two public comments regarding item number four. However, the applicant is requesting item number four be postponed and not considered tonight, so I will not be reading the public comments into the record.
Thank you. As noted, item number four has been requested to be removed from the agenda item, therefore the comments sent in for those particular items will not be read. And we'll wait a few minutes for any call-ins.
Before you close public comments, I have one voicemail message to play into the record.
Okay. All right, Ms. McKay, if you'd like to read that or play that voicemail comment, please.
Certainly. This voicemail message is applicable to item number three.
My name is John Combs. Address is 1541 Fifth Street. My phone number is 702-293-4464. I have two concerns I'd like to expound upon, and one is the placement of the dumpsters. They need to be secured somehow, because, number one, I can watch for my house animals and all sorts of critters jumping in and out of there and dragging trash out. And whenever the trash man comes, we've got a big problem with the wind. And I get a lot of trash being, you know, placed in my yard that I've got to clean up whenever the trash gets blown in. So that's number one. And number two is my concerns with what they are using for cleanup, because every day there's a large amount of gray water that runs down the street. Now, I just want to make sure that it's ecologically safe to use. We've got kids walking through it, we've got animals walking through it, and it's pretty, you know, scary to think about, especially with this coronavirus running around, that people are walking through this stuff and then carrying it into their homes. And then, that's just about it. The big thing about with, you know, keeping the trash contained is, you know, I've seen coyotes jump out of there, I've seen, you know, cats, I've seen all sorts of animals, and ravens hauling the trash out and squirting it all over, and then it gets blown into our yards. And so we need to really think about placement of where those trash bins are, not only for, you know, safety's sake, but also make it easy for the people that are picking up the trash and get in and out of there, you know, safely and sanely. Okay, that's about it. Have a good day, and I hope the meeting goes well. Bye-bye.
We don't have any other calls on hold or any...
No, you may want to just read the number one more time.
Okay, if I can get that up, please, Holly. The public comment number 702-589-9629. Item number one for possible action, approval of the minutes of the June 17th, 2020 regular meeting, and we also have, highlighted in yellow in our packet, an addition or amendment to those meetings.
I would move approval with the draft amendment or revision.
Incorporated, I'd second that motion.
We have a motion for approval with the amendment and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Item number two for possible action, V20-647, Anthony Scott, 550 Nevada Way. A public hearing on an application for a variance in the C2 general commercial zone for a roof sign, whereas Section 11-24-11.A.5.C. of the city code prohibits new roof signs in the historic business sign district. Staff.
This building was previously occupied by the Reynolds Doll Shop. The applicant is remodeling the building for a restaurant to be called Big T's Cantina. There is a portico across the entire front facade of the building located over the city sidewalk, and the applicant is proposing a sign on the portico roof, as you can see per the exhibit in the packet and on the screen. Historically, there once was a sign on this roof, and the applicant's justification knows that there are many roof signs in the downtown area. There are adopted historic design guidelines for the downtown commercial area, and the only comment they make with regard to signs is that unique signs are encouraged. There's nothing more specific than that. And the sign plan was not received in time to place it before the Historic Preservation Committee last month, but it will be going to them for a courtesy review next week. As the sign code does not currently permit new roof signs, there's no listed maximum size or height standards. However, if this were compared to a wall sign, the overall size of the sign would comply with code. If it were a wall sign, it's under the 15% allowed. And as far as height, any sign on a wall is allowed to be as tall as the building. Freestanding signs, for the most part, are, in most areas, allowed to be up to 20 feet high. And in this case, the bulk of the sign would not be higher than the roof line, the one small portion that's circular might be slightly higher than the parapet roof, although we don't have that exact information at this time. For a variance, the Planning Commission has to find in favor of five criteria, and those are listed in the staff report for your use. Basically, past history and some pros and cons regarding each of those are included in the report. The report concludes with alternate findings the Planning Commission can use to either approve or deny requests. With regard to approval, staff does have one standard condition listed there. However, I would like to suggest one possible change relative to what might happen once the Historic Preservation Committee has a chance to make recommendations to the applicant. The wording in the draft condition is that the variance approval, it would be based on the plans and information submitted as part of the variance request. And I would recommend that if this is approved, that that phrasing be changed to refer to information submitted and discussed as part of the variance request. Because one possibility that may come up next week at the Historic Preservation Committee is they might ask the applicant to consider shifting the sign elsewhere on the roof, either moving it back or even turning it perpendicular, like some other signs in the historic district. So if the Planning Commission approves the request for a roof sign, I don't want it to be implied that the only thing that would be approved is exactly what was shown in that exhibit. If you discuss the fact that the sign might change somewhat in location or configuration, but the premise of your variance is just simply whether or not a roof sign can be allowed. If you acknowledge that there may be changes as part of your discussion tonight, and by that change in the language of the condition, then it won't preclude any changes to the sign, should the applicant choose to make them, based on whatever recommendation the Historic Preservation Committee may come up with. And with that, I'll take any of your questions, and when you're done with that, we'll give the applicant a call, so that you can ask questions of him.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Susan, with respect to, with respect to, trying to do this, Criterion D, we do have Historic Preservation Chapter, it talks to the downtown area. And the question I'm kind of, is there, there are no real design guidelines currently for the downtown area, is that correct?
What do you mean by design guidelines in the master plan?
Are there any, it's inferred in the master plan that there are some, but what I'm really asking, are there any?
If the reference you're making is with regard to the Historic Resources Chapter, I believe that acknowledges that there would be design guidelines, and that's based on the zoning chapter for the Historic Preservation Committee. And the Historic Preservation Committee, over the years, adopted numerous design guidelines for various parts of the historic district, including the downtown commercial area. And there are more details in those guidelines beyond signs, but since this request is only particular to signs, those adopted guidelines just simply state unique signs. There are no other design guidelines for signs.
I understand that. So what I'm, so it sounds like there are some design guidelines. Are they codified at all?
No, they are not codified, because the code specifies that those would be by adoption of the Historic Preservation Committee and City Council. So all of the existing design guidelines, and I believe there's seven or eight sets of them, including one for city buildings, one for commercial buildings, one for accessory buildings, and then four or five more for specific residential neighborhoods based on the style of homes. Those all went through discussion of the Historic Preservation Committee. Each one of them came before the Planning Commission, and then they all went on to City Council for adoption. They all could be found on our website, on our Historic Preservation page, in terms of all the adopted guidelines.
Okay, very good. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other question? Paul?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Susan, does the Historical Preservation Committee have, you mentioned it's kind of a courtesy review, do they have any, I guess authority is the right word, to, to a or nay this sign or the design of the sign, or are they, or are you just be making comments regarding, say, a more idealized placement?
The way the Historic Resources zoning chapter is worded, it allows the committee to create guidelines which the council then has to adopt, and with regard to guidelines, the only mandatory aspect is that if a proposal doesn't conform to guidelines, then it goes to the committee for review. But once anything comes to the committee for review, whether it's based on the adopted guidelines or as a courtesy review, their authority is basically just to make recommendations as the code is currently written.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for staff? I have a couple at least. The, in quotations, "unique signs." The historic guidelines for downtown commercial areas adopted by City Council encourage unique signs. Is that up to our own individual interpretation, or is there some, some example of what unique is?
I apologize, because I suppose I, I could have provided the actual copy of the language, and it just says literally "unique signs," and then there's a photo page exhibit, again, which is on the website, and I don't know if Tammy can pull that up, that just has some photos of signs downtown. I can tell you, because of course I've been around for the entire history of the Historic Preservation Committee, that the downtown commercial historic guidelines were written by former member Alan Stromberg, who is also a local architect. And because city governments cannot regulate the content of signs, nor the design of signs, the only aspects that the city can regulate are basically, you know, size-related, location-related, those physical characteristics. And because there are such a variety of signs in the downtown area, Mr. Stromberg, when he proposed those standards, which again went through that three-step approval process and were adopted, they determined it would just be impossible to try to actually create some type of more formalized design standard. My recollection is that the use of the word "unique signs" was basically meant to prohibit a standard box frame sign. In other words, if it's a box, a rectangle that you, or a square that you take plexi and just put it in and out, that is not a unique sign. And so all the photos attached are basically of your free-form shapes and freestanding letters, et cetera. And basically, that was their premise behind unique signs. It's more so what it's not, rather than what it is, because what it could be is pretty much almost infinity.
Right. Okay, thank you. Next question. There are a number of signs along that historic area that have attachments to the main structure of the roof and are cantilevered out, and either rest on the roof or are suspended just above the roof. Is some alternative there similar to those that I'm referring to considered roof-mounted or not?
Basically, that's, those are sort of like hybrid signs. And I'm sorry, I don't have my copy of the zoning ordinance in front of me, but I believe former Director Brock Armentraut has a reference in the sign code to, I'm not sure if it was combination signs, but there was basically another term he used, because you are exactly right. There are some really interesting and unique signs out there, that some of them are on a pole attached to the ground and yet also attached to the roof of a building. And so it's both a, you know, can be considered both a pole sign and a roof sign, to be honest, it's very difficult to determine where those, those fit.
Fair enough. Continuing the muddy waters. On page two of the packet that was sent out in advance, I imagine it's the same packet, but near the bottom of the first paragraph, while it discusses reducing the amount of sign area extending above the roof line, it would also require cutting into the portico roof, which is a historic aspect of the building. So does that mean that we want to preserve the historic aspect, meaning the portico roof, and not, you know, attach or cut into or alter it in some fashion?
The reference there was mostly with regard to cutting into the roof, because with the sign as it's designed, the lettering, for the most part, could fit on the fascia of the portico, but obviously, that 44-inch diameter circle is too large. I mean, if you were, for instance, to deny the variance request for a roof sign and say, "We want that placed on the wall instead," that would force the applicant to get permission from the owner to cut into, you know, the overhanging eave of that portico to make room for that circular portion.
Right.
And chances are, the Historic Preservation Committee would recommend against that.
Okay, thank you. This is in relation to the fact that new signs are not approved per the ordinance when that was adopted. And as I went through that area, the B.C. Company Store has a sign that looks like it was mounted on the roof, and I might be mistaken, but they're new enough that they would have been covered by the same ordinance. Can you enlighten us on that?
Actually, I can't. I'd have to see the sign, and we'd have to look at our permit files to see if there was a permit.
Okay. There wasn't, there wasn't a variance request come through?
No.
If it indeed is on the roof, which I'm not sure.
I would have to check to see what was or wasn't approved. I recall that the mural in tile that's on the side of the building, I recall reviewing the permit for that, because we made sure that the lettering referring to the company store was not more than 5% of the overall wall area for that. I don't recall a permit request coming through for a roof sign, so I'd have to see what's on the front of the building, because if it's on the front of the portico, it may not have been, I'd have to see it.
And I may be, I may not be correct in my presumption that it was on the roof, so that's, if you, if you're not sure, that's fine. Is it also, when the applicant discusses the, the fact that there are other signs and, and, you know, a right is being denied, all occupancies are required to comply with current code when there's a major modification or remodel, isn't that correct?
I'm sorry, you're referring to the building codes?
Yeah, and the ordinances. If there's, if there's a significant remodel, whether it's residential, commercial, or other types, the current codes and ordinances are what's applied to, to those, not those from the past, is that not correct?
That's generally correct, yes. I know that in the zoning ordinance, we've specifically written in some exceptions. So for instance, in older residential neighborhoods, if you're doing a new addition, the ordinance now states that you would comply with the setbacks that were in place at the time that neighborhood was created. But that's codified that way. So unless otherwise codified, yes, normally the, the rule is that you meet current code requirements.
So in essence, all, all occupancies are required to comply with current codes and ordinances. He's not being singled out in this request, that he, that he needs a variance, right?
Right. I mean, I'll, honestly, we'll have to check into the other example you brought up to see if there was a, you know, a different interpretation for some reason. Honestly, it wasn't ringing a bell, so we'll have to look.
Okay. I think that concludes the questions that I had at this point. Anybody else have questions for staff? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think I have another question. So Susan, looking at the diagram provided...
Please, I'll be right back.
Ah, sorry. Looking at the, the drawing presented by the applicant, it's being called a roof sign, so I'm assuming that the sign is out close to the edge of that portico roof and not that parapet wall? Or do we not know that?
This is the only drawing we've received so far, as I recall, but yes, my recollection is that, that is right up front.
Ah, okay. And I think in your opening statements, it sounded though, as though Historic Preservation may have some suggestions, and one could, I suppose, be to move it back to the parapet wall?
That may be one suggestion.
But I noticed the, the package also indicated that while the letters would probably fit within that parapet wall, it would need a variance for the, that center circular portion.
Well, that's if, that's referring to putting, if the lettering and everything was put on the fascia of the portico. What's possible is that the, I thought what you were asking is, in terms of pushing the sign further back, that would be on the roof. So a sign on the fascia of the portico would different, be different than a sign on the roof of the portico.
True, you're right. What I was actually thinking about is, what I'm referring to is a parapet wall, which is that little wall that extends above the roof. And I think the package indicated that, on page two as well, that without a variance sign, da-da-da-da-da, or the fascia of the portico, as long as they don't extend above the roof line. I guess if we were to approve this, and as you pointed out early in, in the background, it sounds like we could approve it with allowances, and one allowance might be allowance for changes per any recommendations by Historic Planning Commission, that, so one allowance might be that they would recommend to put, push it back to the parapet wall. And would it be feasible for us in an approval, if we so go that direction, to allow that variance for the sign to extend above that parapet wall? If you understand what I'm asking. It's a long-winded way of asking how much flexibility we have if we were to approve this.
Well, that depends on how you want to word your motion. I mean, if you are only interested in approving exactly what is shown in this drawing, then if the Historic Preservation Committee wants something different and the applicant wants to follow that, he'd have to come back to you to revise that.
Right.
So that's why I suggested that if the commission is in favor of approving the variance, that you change the wording in the draft condition to refer to information submitted and discussed as part of the variance request. Because if you wish to explicitly state that you're okay with the sign being modified and being anywhere on the roof, be it the portico or behind the parapet wall, or above the parapet wall, or whatever you like, if you're okay with basically any option for a roof sign, if it's in conformance with whatever the Historic Preservation Committee might recommend, you've got that option.
Right, right. Thank you for, for the clarification and for some suggested language.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a comment. I Googled the Boulder City Company Store, and their signage is on the parapet wall. It doesn't exceed above the roof line.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? I do have one note or question, if you will, on page three, the four... I do have one note or question, if you will, on page three, the four other recent variance requests, says none were installed, and the third one down about the, the flying saucer, that one happened to be tabled so the planning commission, by the planning commission, so that the city could get more input from the community regarding roof signs. So that seemed to be an alternative that was taken in that particular instance, is that correct, that they tabled that for further comment?
It was tabled and never basically came back to the table. I looked back at the minutes for that item and there'd been a preliminary version of a sign survey at that time, and so the limited results we could provide, you know, I honestly don't recall, but I think in, no, I don't even want to, I don't want to trust my menu.
That's fine, my point was that that's an option to us, right, is to table it for further.
Yes.
Clarification or input from the HPC if we want to.
Yes, you can certainly table if you want those examples. Please don't ma, ask us to do another sign survey.
No, 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 that wasn't my point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was really problematic.
No, thanks. All right. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Susan. And do we have the applicant available for question and comment?
I'll get her.
This time?
Hi, it's Tammy at City Hall with the Planning Commission meeting.
Yes.
The planning commissioners are here and available to speak to you.
Okay.
So you can, you can go ahead at any time, whatever you'd like to present.
Um, so I submitted a, a application to put a roof sign on 515 Nevada Way.
Is there anything additional besides what was included in the packet that you'd like to add?
Uh, not that I know of. I'm just trying to get approval to put the sign up on the, the cover.
Okay, Mr. Scott, if you'll please remain on the line, I'm going to ask our planning commissioners if they have any questions to ask of you, sir.
Okay.
Any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Scott, and thank you for making yourself available. This is Commissioner Matuska, and a simple question, from the drawing, I was trying to discern whether or not the intent of the sign, or the location of the sign was going to be close to the end of the, I would say, let me rephrase that, the street edge of that portico roof? Or was it going to be further up the roof, say, towards the parapet wall?
No, it will be, it will be probably right over the top of the support of that, that cover. So where the arches are is probably as far back from the street edge as it will go.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I'm not sure if I can ask this, but we understand that in a week, you'll go before the Historic Planning Committee, I'm sorry, Historic Preservation Committee, and they may have some thoughts and recommendations. Are you amenable to alternate locations or configurations?
Um, I mean, nothing is set in stone. Um, that's, you know, when it was time to submit, that's what I had available at the time, so that's what I submitted.
I appreciate that. I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Scott, Steve Walton here. I've got a question for you on the, the round artistic part of the, or drawing part, if you will. It says it's to be a neon, if I read correctly, is that right, sir?
That is correct.
Is, is that to blink or flash in any way in its design?
I do not believe it's going to flash. It will be on or it will be off. There's, there's no, I, it's not going to flash, it's not going to move.
Okay. And in the photographs that were included, I'm guessing that you provided some of the old historic photographs as part of your application, or were they included by staff? By staff, okay. We have some old historic photographs, sir, of, of the original building and the signs that were, were on it back then, and there was a roof sign at one time, which is noted, but it faced so that drivers heading east or west could read it, not just a, a parallel to the, to the curb, if you will, facing outward like yours. Was that a design consideration that you had considered for your sign, or, or, I know you said this is what you had when you submitted, but...
So originally, I was going to put a sign that you could see going up and down the street both ways. And one of the problems, the issues that I have is, there's a big tree right there, and so coming in from, if you're coming in from, coming up the highway, you can't even see the roof. The tree is mature and you would never see the sign. The only way you'd see the sign is if you were coming down from the park, you could, you would be able to see a sign that way, but it, that tree just blocks that entire roof line.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Sir, thank you for your time and for calling in for the application.
You're, you're welcome to stay on for the rest of this item if you want, or hang up?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we've had all the question opportunities that we might want. Is there any further discussion or idea for some kind of a motion prior to that or subsequent?
It's still a public hearing, Mr. Chairman, too.
I'm sorry. So we can have call-ins. Thank you for reminding me. As this is a public hearing, could you put the number up again, please, for, so I could read it? All right, we will close this portion of the public comment for this particular application and bring it to the Planning Commission. Anybody have comments or discussion?
Yes, I do. There seems to be two issues, at least that I, that I'm, I don't want to say concern me, but I'm aware of. One is, of course, we're dealing really with an outdated code, so we're still in the mode of, we have to create a variance, and of course, we have, God, this is awful, we have other, um, examples, of course, of what have been allowed in the past, which obviously creates a little bit of an issue. And then the second one, which is, to me, a little more interesting, is we, we really kind of bypassed what appears to me be a very good thing, which would be to have run it by the Historic Preservation Committee first. And then that way, all we would really be dealing with is the actual variance, not the, let's say, the quality or how it fits into the district itself, since our job is, as I understand it, is primarily technical variance. We, not saying we couldn't do that now, but it just seems to me that we're missing a, a step that, to me, is kind of important. In my mind, I would like, I think this is one of those that you have to table and just wait until the Historic Preservation Committee has reviewed it, and then bring it back, and then we would have all the facts. But that's my thought.
Thank you. Other comments, concerns, before we request a motion? Yes, sir?
It seems to me that our concern is not the aesthetics of the, the sign, that's Historic Preservation's area, but to bring that sign down onto the fascia, I think, I don't, I don't think that, that's very practical because it's a low roof to begin with, and if it's put out, down on the fascia below the roof line, it's more vulnerable to vandalism and damage. But tabling it before, until we get input from Historic Preservation is fine with me. Sounds like a good idea.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Any other thoughts to propose a motion?
Are we able to table it? I assume we are. If it is, I would make a motion to table it.
So we have a motion on the floor to table the item. Would you like to further define your motion, sir?
Until after the Historic Preservation Committee has had a chance to come to a decision as to what they would recommend doing.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table until the Historic Preservation Committee has a opportunity to review and potentially discuss this with, with the applicant. Any discussion? Yes, sir?
I, I think it's fair to say I'm, I have to agree with Matt's initial statement that our job is more the technical aspect of a variance. In other words, would we agree with the placement of a sign on a roof and not, as you point out, the aesthetics of the sign? In other words, what direction it's pointed, whether it's, in other, what direction it's pointed, perhaps where it's located on that roof, that sort of thing. So I would, I'm not, and given the fact that the Historical Preservation Committee does not have, let's say, an ability or an authority to say yes or no to the sign, that's, that's our responsibility, I would actually be comfortable discussing further whether, tonight, whether or not we feel a sign located on, on that rooftop is reasonable. I think we've got a drawing that gives us a pretty fair idea of what is intended, in fact, maybe an exact representation of what is intended. And so my comments right this moment are just on the motion itself. I, I think I'm not really so concerned that I would want to table it and cause the applicant to delay another month on design and construction of the sign. That's just my thought.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. I would agree with Paul on that. In terms of what we talked about being our responsibility here, and I, I think Sue mentioned that we could amend it to put language in here to take the Historic Preservation or empower them to make recommendations before it goes to council. So I think we can achieve both things by amending the language to allow the Historic Preservation Committee to make those recommendations and just do our job to, to pass the variance. I'm also concerned that delaying or tabling this tonight would put them behind schedule for the August approval by council, and I don't see that being in the best interest of the community as a whole, when I think we can achieve what we want by amending the language.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this is not a recommendation to council. This is either approval or denial of a variance, and it starts and ends here, right? Unless they choose to appeal.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Mays. Development Director, you are correct. The variance, unless there is an appeal, would end with the Planning Commission, so there is no further consideration by the City Council.
If that picture, yeah.
Only if the applicant were pursuing consideration of an RDA grant, and that's one of the things that they're evaluating, that that would go on to the City Council, and they would be taking into consideration, obviously, the input of both the Planning Commission as well as the Historic Preservation Committee with that review.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. In case that affected, you know, your opinion on voting tonight, I wanted to make sure we, we had that clear. Do you have comments, sir?
I was gonna echo a little bit what Beth said about, in the beginning of, when Susan was doing her staff report, she was suggesting just adding the words "and discussed" after that first sentence, or that first line of the condition on page four. If we just add, if we, "and, and discussed," that would, or would that effectively allow the Historic Preservation Committee to give their input, and we can also move forward with this variance?
I think we need clarification. To me, that leaves it kind of open-ended because, you know, they aren't necessarily obligated to the Historic Preservation Committee, so I'd, I'd like to hear from staff, you know, exactly where that lands.
Considering the Historic Preservation Committee doesn't have authority under the code to mandate changes to the applicant, it may not be appropriate for the Planning Commission to mandate that the applicant follow whatever change the Historic Preservation Committee might recommend. What I was suggesting was that if the commission in general is in favor of the idea of a roof sign on this building, that your approval doesn't have to be based on solely that one exhibit provided, that you could, with your motion, state, for instance, that you're approving the variance, and to also recommend that the applicant take heed of whatever recommendation the Historic Preservation Committee might provide. So note that that's not a mandate. And then when, if that's the motion, for instance, that you chose, and if you approved it with the condition in the staff report, just add that phrase as discussed, so that that would cover that. You still have a condition that your approval is based on the information provided and discussed at the meeting, and then as part of the motion, you could request, if that's your choice... if that's your choice, that the applicant, you know, consider whatever the Historic Preservation Committee might have to recommend. That way, you're still approving a roof sign, but allowing for changes that would not be forced to come back to the Planning Commission.
While you're there, you know, the historic guidelines for the downtown commercial area, as adopted by City Council, and I don't know how long ago that was, but it was adopted by one of our sitting city councils, encourage unique signs. And that's talking about the type of sign, I suppose. But also, somewhere along the line, there was a reason for not allowing roof signs on new, or new roof signs. Could you please elaborate on that?
Actually, I believe, when I did my research on this, that the prohibition on roof signs goes back decades. And no, I can't tell you why, because I believe I tried, you know, I was looking up the minutes from way back when, and let's just say that they weren't very detailed way back when. And in some cases, there's not even staff reports. It looks like, you know, they were minimal, if they existed at all. So I believe my reference in the report, yes, hold it, sorry, I'm in the wrong one here. Ah, yes. In the C2 zone, which is what most of the downtown area is zoned, the ordinance prohibiting roof signs dates back to 1983. And prior to that date, they were prohibited in other commercial zones. And as I noted, over the decades, the names of zones have changed, and some have been combined, so it's not easy to do one-to-one comparisons. But no, there really wasn't any reason, as I recall, when I was looking up the minutes, for that code change as to why they were prohibiting roof signs downtown.
Thank you. Which puts us in a position where, you know, we should be looking at these variance requests critically, right? Because that's the ordinance that exists. And what our reasoning would be to go against a standing ordinance. Or are we gonna say, in essence here, you know, since there are so many, it basically becomes precedent, which is one of the five criteria it's not supposed to do, right? It's not supposed to become precedent based on the allowing of the variance. And I don't know, it kind of puts me in a prickly spot, I feel. And I'm inclined to support and uphold the ordinances as they stand, unless there's strong reason to go otherwise. But we do see driving down there, and even we see in these historic pictures that were provided in our packet, that, you know, the Browder Building originally, back in, well, I don't know when that sign was put up, we know it was built in the '30s, had a roof sign, "Eat at Browder's." So that, to me, would make it kind of historic, right? So, I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there for consideration. We do have a motion and a second, so I don't want to vary too far from that. Mr. DiTeresa?
Yes. I think this is a bit of an unusual case, though, because the construction of this building, I don't think it allows for a sign to be feasible anywhere but the roof. You know, as I said before, on the fascia, it's too low, it's too susceptible to vandalism and damage. And I don't know where else the applicant could place a sign for his business. Anyway, that's my thought.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, just to add a little bit more on what you're saying. I'll go back to what I actually said initially. There were two issues to me, where there's really an outdated code. And then, of course, we have the issue, the Historic Preservation Committee really hasn't been able to do their job, whether it's aesthetics, but it's actually, I suspect they do a little bit more in aesthetics. They're gonna look at the sign, they're gonna look at placement, they're gonna look at the whole thing. So there's a lot to design that is just more than, it's a high tier and it's an area here, okay? So the point I'm getting at is that, why I feel that we should table it, so that the committee, our Preservation Committee, has an opportunity to look at it and do what they're supposed to do. And then come forward with what might then be a variance, because our code is out of date. Now, the reality is, if we got the code up to date, we also could incorporate, because we only have guidelines for the historic district, you also have the opportunity to put some level of code information into, and that addresses downtown signs, as either you call it an exception or something else. But the point is, if we re-looked at the code and really brought it up to date, we have an opportunity to better get ourselves out of always doing variances for uniqueness. So even though I made the, I made the motion to table primarily on the Preservation Committee, it really is also, I think we, I would go a lot further. I think it's killing me. I think there's a lot more work that needs to be done. But for the immediate thing right now, I'd say I stick with, I think it should be tabled with the Preservation Committee do its job.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any other comments? I feel the sign as presented here, if the Historic Preservation Committee reviews it, may or may not change it at all, or of any substance. And I kind of feel like we're turfing it and not making a decision where a decision should be made, honestly. So those are my feelings on that, so. Do we have any other comments before I call for a vote on the motion to table?
I was just gonna make one quick comment. I'm going through the sign code right now. It looks like there was a massive overhaul in 2005. They've had ordinances that have updated it in 2007, and again in 2015. I just, I don't agree with Ernie that this is that far out of date. I mean, 15 years doesn't seem that out of line to me. It's just a comment.
Does that code at all talk to the downtown district? Even though, because we only, right now, as Susan has explained, we only have the design guidelines. Now, you still could, in a code, include a little more specifics. So, yeah, it was last updated perhaps in 15, but it obviously has not addressed the downtown and uniqueness.
Any other discussion before we have a vote?
Just one question, if I might. So, Ernie, you've mentioned a couple of, I think, reasonable concerns, and that lead you to kind of favor us tabling it. One of the things you mentioned just here a moment ago was, clearly, the, as we all know, and especially those of us who have dealt with signs for so many years here, that the sign code certainly doesn't cover all aspects or all possible signs, right? Are you kind of suggesting that if we were to table this, that you, ideally, you might like to see it tabled until the codes could be adjusted to address this?
No. Not in favor of doing that. I mean, it's an issue I have. It somewhat plays into it, but it's not, it's, no.
Okay, I'll call for the votes. So all in favor of tabling the item until it can be presented to the Historic Preservation Committee, non-binding, essentially, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So I have, in favor of the motion, Mark Fioski and DiTeresa?
So four to two, that motion doesn't carry. We can go for another motion if there is any interest in another motion. Or further discussion in that emotion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve V-20-647 with staff findings, adding, in the condition, adding the words "and discussed" after the word "submitted." And also request the applicant to take heed with the Historic Preservation Committee recommendation.
Can I ask a question about that language, and I need to ask it a s- Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And my question specifically is, does that also include a variance for the height to be above the roof line? Because there's two issues here, really, and the one above the roof line didn't get addressed in the subject, so could you clarify for our discussion here?
Yes, based on his wording, and as discussed at this meeting, what you're approving, if this passes, would be a roof sign, and that you're okay with it changing based on any recommendation that the Historic Preservation Committee might make. So yes, that might mean that if the Historic Preservation Committee wants it further back and on top of the roof, and that it might, part of it might be higher than the parapet, if that's what they want, and based on Member Lassoff's motion, if that's what you pass, that would be okay.
Thank you. I'm inclined to ask for, to ask you if you're willing to also add some language to your, to your motion.
I'm definitely open to conversation.
And it just has to do with that very thing. I don't want to approve a blanket, a thing that includes all other non-conforming sign standards. So some language, would you be open to amending your motion to include some kind of language that covers that?
What do you propose, Chairman?
That in other ways, in all other ways, is conforming to the sign ordinance.
I'd be okay with that.
Okay. And we need a, so Tammy, could you read or repeat some reasonable semblance of that motion and second for the group, please?
Well, I have on here, I'm gonna, on your microphone. Approve the roof sign that could potentially be requested by city, that was requested by City Planner in the packet, and add the language "and discussed" after submitted, and ask the applicant to take heed to the Historic Preservation Committee's recommendation. And beyond that, I'm not sure what you're asking.
And if I'm not mistaken, and that the sign is, in all other ways, compliant with the sign ordinance? Is that, is that right? Okay. Okay, thank you. Any discussion about the motion and the second? Okay, we'll call for a vote on that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, item number three for possible action, V-20-648, Cynthia Ford at 761 Nevada Way. A public hearing on an application for a variance in the C2 general commercial zone for expansion of restaurant seating with six parking spaces on site, whereas Section 11-23-2.D. of the city code would require 31 parking spaces on site. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant would like to build a new patio to the side of her building for additional restaurant seating. The area of the patio is actually part of the city right-of-way, so that will require approval by Public Works of an encroachment license. The application has been filed, and basically, the Public Works Department doesn't have an inherent objection to the request. It would just need to, you know, meet whatever the code requirements are. The applicant's justification refers to the need for additional dining area due to the current COVID-19 restrictions, which limit seating capacity. However, since the plan is to build a new concrete patio on the side of the building with an attractive railing, obviously, you know, it would be intended to be used after the COVID-19 restrictions are ultimately lifted. And so therefore, staff advertised to the variance based on the maximum potential seating for this property, being indoor front patio, side patio. As the report notes, this property, although not technically within the boundaries of the historic district, is still in a very old part of the city, built between the 1930s and 50s. And this happens to be one of the smallest properties in the area. So that's why there, at this point, are only six spaces in the rear yard. However, the property has, from what the city can determine, always been used as a restaurant, and therefore, has always had substandard parking. As far as we know, that hasn't been a problem. You can see from the aerial photo exhibit, and I'm sure by personal experience, just being local residents, that many people do park on the public streets, which is certainly not prohibited. It's just that on-street parking is not counted by the code to meet parking requirements. However, as the staff report also notes, the Boulder City zoning code is one of the few that bases parking for restaurants solely on patron seating. And just simply comparing to other codes in Clark County, pretty much everybody else uses a square foot standard of the building. One of them uses a hybrid of building size plus seating, and you use whichever is larger. And so the staff report compares the city's requirements to the other entities in Clark County, and you could pretty much see that our requirements are on the high side. And the staff report also notes, as part of the evaluation of the five criteria, that there have been other parking variances granted elsewhere in town, and that when the last, most recent ones were discussed, staff brought up at the time, and it's still on our to-do list, is that our intent, you know, as time allows, is to be able to further research restaurant parking in Boulder City to see what type of code amendment would be appropriate for this. It is true that elsewhere, restaurants do have a higher parking standard than standard retailer office. It just appears to be that Boulder City's code is exceptionally high with regard to our current standard, which is very old. Analyzes those five criteria, and then again, has the standard condition at the end that the variance approval is based on the request before you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, just to kind of make sure I understand the bigger picture, or, you know, full picture. So today, with the current seating, Southwest Diner is, I would say, non-conforming to the parking standard, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so if they were to add this, this new patio and X number of seats, they would simply be non-conforming to a higher degree?
Correct.
If you will. Okay, okay. As far, I'm looking at the diagram, and this might be something to ask the applicant, but have you heard any word about a, kind of a roof or shade structure? Granted, I realize it would cover their sign, but have you heard any word about that? And would that be allowed on an encroachment?
It would be, if they want to have that, they would have to apply for a permit through Public Works for that. Yeah. In terms of, it wouldn't be a zoning issue. Because pretty much anything in the right-of-way is just simply up to a Public Works encroachment permit. So that, that, and it wouldn't trigger a parking requirement or anything else related to it. So that, that ass, and it wouldn't trigger a parking requirement or anything else related to zoning.
Thank you. I did a little math and I, I'm not sure that I see the same math that you're explaining. So, maybe we can talk this through. As we look at the number of seats, that's 84 total if we add the 16 seats for the side patio. And, and so if we, if we just go by the seats and, you know, you've got the, the numbers there, just by the seats with the number of parking spaces required, we're looking at 35% of the, of the area. And if you look at the, just the North Las Vegas and Henderson, as the lower of those comparisons, they're looking at 25%. So it's a full 10% higher in Boulder City. And the others, would be much closer to where Boulder City's at. If we take Mesquite, they're 33%, and that's right close to where we would be. The, the numbers aren't terribly far off, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Do you see them as significantly higher?
I guess, I apologize because I'm not understanding what math you're doing to come up with those percentages.
Well, I'm using the seats that you show versus the parking spaces required.
Well, all those other entities, they're not using seats.
Right, you're saying they use square footage.
Right.
So if we used square footage, did you do a comparison how far off we are?
Oh, um, I apologize. No, I didn't.
Okay, that, that was where I was driving.
Oh.
So I just used seats and made just a general comparison for what their expectation was, presuming that that had some type of a correlation for square footage, but... Any, any questions for staff? Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant available?
Hello?
Hi Cindy, this is Tammy at the Planning Commission meeting. You're on speaker with the Planning Commissioners. If you'd like to add anything to what was already submitted or just wait for them to ask you questions.
I'll just wait for them to ask me questions.
All right.
Okay, do we have any questions of the applicant? Yes, sir.
Cindy, this is Matt DiTeresa.
Hello?
Hello. Can you give me an estimate of how many of your customers to your restaurant come from surrounding motels and a big hotel almost across the street? What I'm driving at is, do you get a lot of walk-in traffic?
I missed the last two.
No, I'm, I'm trying-
Of walk-in traffic?
Yeah, I'm trying to-
We have, we do get a lot from the motels. I, I do, um, the Best Western across the street, we do their breakfast, so that's a lot, you know? And then I have discounts at every hotel. So, you know, if they choose to take it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, um, this is, uh, Arnie Biasi. Where you intend to put that pad, um, is there an intent at some point to put a cover over it or provide any screening to the, um, protect from the elements or the sun in the event that, uh, that they were exposed?
No, they're, the tables will be partially under the awning that's there. Already. But no other awning because then it would cover up my sign and that would be silly. I don't want to do that.
Okay.
This isn't about the, the patio. This is only about the parking variance that we're talking about, right?
Correct.
So whether she has shading or not is irrelevant to our decision, really.
Yeah.
I just wanted to point that out so we don't go down a rat hole on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Questions for the applicant? Okay, I guess that ends the questions for the applicant. As this is a public hearing, we'll open the time now for public hearing. And those wishing to make public comments on this, uh, item can call 702-589-9629.
Cindy, I'm going to hang up with you now so we can take public comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Somebody was trying to call.
Yeah, it sounded, yeah. The number to call in for public comment on this item number three is 702-589-9629. Well, if somebody was trying to call in, I think we missed them. We'll give them another 20 or 30 seconds in case they're trying to redial in if it was somebody. Okay, we'll close public comment and bring discussion to the commission. Any discussion on the item?
Um, yes, sir. Before we make a motion, I was wondering whether I could ask one final question of city staff? Thank you. And Susan, I think this would be for you. To your knowledge, has the city received any complaints about parking associated with Southwest Diner?
Um, we did look into that. Apparently through the system we have for code enforcement complaints, they're kept on record for a year. And, um, the two that I pulled up, there, there were two related to that address. One of them I did hear back from the police officer and he said it had nothing to do actually with parking. And the other one, I didn't hear back from the officers, but that appeared to be the case as well. That it was just sort of coincidental and sounded like a medical issue where somebody was blocking the sidewalk due to a medical issue, but it got logged in under park, under parking. So from what I could tell, it did not appear that there were any complaints on record, you know, regarding parking for this restaurant.
Thank you.
Thanks. More discussion? Yes, Mr. DiTeresa?
Yeah, I tend to fall on the side of approving this because, that business is surrounded by motels and hotels. They do get a lot of walk-in traffic. And, uh, as we just heard, there haven't been a lot of complaints about, uh, on-street parking in that area. So I don't see this as being a big problem.
Thank you. Mr. Lazoff?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I see this as something that's real similar to the Vinnie's Pizza situation where, uh, if there's not enough parking, it only hurts the applicant. And she's asking for more seating to help her business and, I mean, whenever possible, as long as it doesn't hurt anybody, I think we should help out businesses. So I'd be in favor of approving this.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I would agree with Nate on that. Additionally, the thing for me that, um, has a big impact is the fact that she's taking care of the hotel, which all, their cars are going to be all parked across the street in that parking lot anyway. So I don't think that adding that extra space and the required parking more than is already behind, uh, really impacts the community in a negative way at all. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just to put a counter viewpoint, the biggest issue I still see is we, we never seem to be able to address in our code all these unique situations that exist, of which they're all for good reasons. We've, you know, and there's no reason not to go with the variance since we've granted it before. But the point is, it would be very nice to not have to do variances if we just took a active relook at what, how the code should address parking. But that's my comment.
Thank you. I think it's worth noting, I, I agree, I think, uh, we need to be as friendly to all of our businesses as possible. I mean, that's important for our community to thrive. There are a lot of businesses in town that spend thousands of dollars maintaining, parking for their business according to the ordinance and don't request the variance. And I think it's at least worth noting, when you go by there, there's really no, no land available to expand. I, I don't doubt that they would consider that if there was an opportunity to expand. They do have the opportunity within 500 feet, as I read this correctly, to, to find a lot. But even within that space, I'm not so sure it exists. So there, I think there are unique circumstances to this, to this request that, that are, you know, unlike any others in the area. And certainly, everybody would love to have more seating for the current spacing requirement. That's not unique to them by any means. But, um, I think the only thing, uh, that appears to be holding them back as far as the ordinances go is just this particular one, which doesn't seem like a reasonable thing to stand in their way. My two cents. Any other discussion or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve V 20 dash 648 as written or based on the condition provided in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So you said based on the condition, is that on page five? There are some conditions put there, is that what you're referring to?
I was looking at page six of the package-
Okay.
For this item, and there's a condition above, um, item B for deny, but this is above.
Okay, condition one on page six.
Correct.
Okay, so that included in your motion?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote, all in favor of passing with condition?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution passes? Variants, I'm sorry, variance passes. And noting that item number four has, uh, the applicant has requested that it be removed from tonight's agenda. So, um, there will be, uh, no participation on item number four. And, uh, item number five for possible action, AM dash 20 dash 352, resolution number 1196, City of Boulder City. A public hearing and recommendation to the city council on a proposed amendment to Title 11, Chapter 16 of the city code to clarify permitted uses in the G government zones. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The commission has before them, attached in the packet, the draft amendment to the code. The government zones currently include five subzones. The GM government municipal zone, which is basically your general basic government zone that pretty much allows almost anything related to government and public uses. And the remaining subzones are more specific in nature and kind of self-explanatory. The government park zone, the government flood control zone, the government open space zone, and then the government wildlife conservation zone, which is specific to a particular area by I-11 that was required per the Federal Highway Administration when I-11 was built. The reason staff is proposing, um, more clarified language at this point is that there are a couple of new proposals for uses that would occur in the government zones that don't quite fit, um, that are in the language there currently. And in fact, our current language really doesn't address all of the various uses that we currently have in the government zones. And the two current proposals that we're looking at are that the city council has leased a site at ABC Park, which is in our government park zone, to lend a hand so that they could use one of the cottages as their new office. And then secondly, the state owns the former Welcome Center at US 93 and Nevada Way, which is in the government municipal zone. And, um, the state is working with the Chamber of Commerce to have them relocate to that site. And in conjunction with that, there may also be, um, space then available for local tourism companies to use that as their base for pickup and drop-off of customers. And those would be basically private companies that would be having an activity in the government zones. And the staff report mentions, includes rather, the current code definitions for public use, a quasi-public use and accessory uses. And the attached draft code amendment basically does the following. It expands the listing of public uses to better address all the existing public uses we currently have in our government zones. And it states that compatible quasi-public uses would also be permitted as they, as some already do exist in government zones now. And lastly, that it allows for compatible accessory uses with limitations on area. And the staff report notes that, um, while most government land in the city is owned by the city, there are others that are owned by other governmental agencies such as the state or public entities such as the library district. And there's even a couple of properties in our- And there's even a couple of properties in our government zones that are owned by nonprofit entities such as a church or a senior center. And then also, since we, I believe, attached a list of various, the various uses on the current government zone land, you may be tempted to say, well, what about this or that? It's not on the list. If it's not on the list, it's probably not zoned government because we do have other city functions, for instance, that aren't on government zone land, like our original municipal golf course happens to be zoned residential. So that, the attached list to this report is not meant to be a comprehensive list of all city facilities, just the uses that are on existing government zone land. And then the items highlighted in yellow are basically the non-governmental entities or quasi-public uses, you know, and accessory uses that are currently using government zone land for, you know, per lease or contract or other license agreement. So with that, we'll start taking your questions.
Thanks. Any questions for staff? Mr. Lazoff.
So Susan, I, one of the first things I did is I started going through this list. And I went on the Gizmo site. And on Gizmo, it shows that the library district and ABC Park is zoned R1. So I would assume that's not up to date.
No, you're right, that is not up to date. And if you're looking at the zoning per the county website, no, it's not up to date. And in fact, just as a reference, if you're looking up properties through the assessor pages, it often has a link to a zoning category. And many of those are wrong and they don't even use the terms the city uses. I think years back, the county assessor in their best attempt to be helpful, just sort of took a good stab at what they thought the zoning might be. And in fact, ABC Park used to be zoned residential back when it was the state children's home. So it's possible that that county reference is just very old. But we do have our current zoning map on the city website available now, so anybody is able to look that up.
Okay. This is slightly off topic, especially on this agenda item, but would, would the city get in contact with the county to get their website current? Or is that just another thing to add to the pile?
Another thing to add to the pile. I'm not sure how easy it is to have them update that database.
Gotcha. I didn't have any other questions.
Thank you. I'd like to just make a point that what we're looking at also is a text amendment to this section, not any, not that you were inferring, but for all of us, our benefit, that not, that we're looking at changing any zoning or any, any part of the master plan, but just the text section as included in the packet so that it can be more conforming with what the actual uses are. It's actually a clarifying document, I think, that has good, good, good information contained therein that updates, which is what we've been trying to do for a long time, our ordinances. So. Go ahead.
Yeah, Susan, everything looks good. I do wonder, on paragraph 11162, under the permitted uses, under item C where it says accessory use is compatible with and incidental to the principal use. And when you, I think when you go back to chapter one where there's further definition of like the public quasi and that, it, item C is kind of still open. It's, is there a way to provide a little more clarification like is done in A and B as in?
Essentially, it would be challenging to try to anticipate, you know, a specific listing of accessory uses because, for instance, we couldn't have predicted that the state would close its welcome center and agree to let the Chamber of Commerce use it. Who would then also want to let private recreational companies use that as a pickup and drop-off spot for their customers? It all makes perfect sense. But if you try to add specific uses to define accessory use somehow other than it's already defined, it just creates the situation where then you're looking at future code amendments, you know, because you can't get a variance for a use. But the other thing to remember is that any use, at least on city-owned property in the government zones, is going to be subject to, you know, city council approval anyway. So it's not as if anything is going to be done in a vacuum or behind closed doors. Any such accessory use is going to go through a very public approval process.
I hear you. It's just that it, it's a very broad definition if you want to consider it a definition at this point. That's why, while I'm not looking necessarily for specifics as much as what you have like in A or even what's in B in chapter one, it's like, you hit on the head in one sense, what about private use when it comes to an accessory or compatible incidental use? Where is there, would that be allowed? I'm, I'm trying to think ahead as to what the possible kind of things that are under this accessory use with, that's compatible with, you know?
Mr. Chairman, if I could add some additional thoughts to the planning commission's deliberation. Part of the SaaS evaluation of this text amendment was to look at how this zoning was not in compliance with some of the other zoning districts. We have several zoning districts that allow for accessory structures and accessory uses. It's already in the code. We define accessory use within the code. And actually, with respect to the proposed tax amendment for your consideration, it's further defined here under the G-zone proposed tax amendment because it includes the language compatible and incidental to the principal use. If you look at other zoning districts, it just simply allows as a permitted use, accessory buildings and uses. So we've attempted to further clarify that here to help kind of define it, but at the same time, try to be consistent with how accessory uses are permitted in other zoning districts.
Somehow, the terms compatible and incidental do not really say a whole lot. That's my problem. I'm, I'm just, I don't have a feel for what falls into that at all. Or let's say, what you would exclude perhaps. You know, typically, this should have some guidance level of how to interpret it. Unless, again, if we want to just keep it so wide open, we can include anything in it. But I'm just poking at, is there a way to provide some additional clarification that is a little more than just compatible and incidental accessory use?
Maybe, Mr. Chairman, I could ask the question of the commission, since we have several zoning districts that already allow accessory uses. If, in your experience as a commission, you've seen that as problematic. And I've only been with the community for coming up on three years, but I have not heard of concerns with how accessory uses are utilized today within the community and in other zoning districts. So certainly, I would look to your guidance with respect to that.
But to your point, right now, accessory use, if, even if we went to the item that was pulled, the RV thing, there's very clear discussion of what accessory uses are, which, you know, in terms of sheds, you know, gazebos, blah, 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 there's, there's a listing of stuff. Now, I'm not suggesting that under this government thing, an accessory use can be defined quite that way, but I would think we would have some examples. If we don't have any examples, why do we have it? I mean, then why accessory use?
Well, and again, I think you're describing as accessory structures, and those are the identified accessory structures.
You're referring to accessory uses defined elsewhere in a code. The point is, yes, there are. Example I'm thinking of is there is talk structures and the types of things that are allowed in a certain zone, yes. And there, they do provide some specific, further clarification on what an accessory, allowable accessory use is. Here, we talk about an accessory use that just, it, what is it? I don't, I don't have a feel for it. It's like open-ended, I could do anything there. If that, if that's the intent, that we just want to have a catch-all for whatever we want to put in there, okay, then I'll, then that's, I guess, the intent.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Yes, sir.
To, I guess I've split up the question, would you remind us once again of what is the kind of approval process, if you will, for those accessory uses? In other words, as, as Ernie points out, this seems fairly open. So what is that, what is the approval process? Or is there an approval process?
Well, just like any other permitted use, it's evaluated by the city to determine if it's in compliance with the zoning ordinance. And as a permitted use, if it meets that criteria, then it's allowed to move forward and any other regulations or requirements obviously apply and full compliance with the city's codes. So in other zoning districts, we have accessory uses as permitted uses. And so if somebody comes to us and says that here's the principal use as a restaurant, but I'm also going to have as an accessory use retail, we evaluate under those conditions and determine, you know, as is defined in the code, whether it is incidental to the permitted use. And that is what we use for guidance to make that determination. And so in this case, in understanding your concerns, that's why we've, for the government zoning district, have gone above and beyond what is traditionally permitted in the other zoning district, it just says accessory use. Here, it's compatible, incidental, and cannot be more than a certain percentage of the gross land area. To reinforce that type of use can't be the principal use. It can't have a significant impact or a negative impact on how that property is being utilized. And so that further restricts and defines that.
And so to continue with the question, so when a use is proposed on, within the G-zone, it obviously comes to staff, as you've just pointed out. Staff would certainly make an initial determination as to whether that accessory use is in fact compatible or incidental. Is the approval of the use then granted by city staff or does it go up to city council typically?
No, it would be city staff. Just like any time a proposed use is brought to staff for consideration, we have to make a determination. Does it fit within the listed permitted or conditional uses of that zoning district or not? And it's not always black and white. And so interpretations have to be made. Is that use similar to another one of the conditional permitted uses that's already in the code? If it is, then it is able to proceed under the city's codes and regulations and approval processes. If it's not, then it requires a text amendment for consideration by the planning commission and the city council.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? And staff is the applicant, so there won't be anybody, we'll be telephoning. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
I'm wondering, under letter A, is there an opportunity to expand that at this point a little bit where it says in the third line, schools and related facilities? Is there an opportunity for that here?
Certainly, the planning commission, it's at your discretion to modify the language as proposed.
Thank you.
Could you, could you clarify, you're looking at A under permitted uses?
Under permitted uses, letter A, third line, second word, schools.
Uh huh.
Add and related facilities.
Oh, I see. In other words, accessory use is compatible with and incidental to the principal use? Ah, makes sense. Would, so the question would be, would that C cover what you're seeking or would you like to have that added specifically to A?
I think that, I think C would cover it, but if we're not going to go with C or do something different with C, then add it up in A.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions for staff? Okay, as this is a public hearing, we'll open the time for public hearing and comment Well, the phone's not ringing off the hook, so we'll close public comment and proceed with discussion among the commission. Any comments or questions, concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't see anything out of line or jumped out at me as to why we shouldn't approve this. So as, now I'd be in favor.
Is that a motion?
Discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the, as the resolution stated herein by the staff.
What was the motion, sir?
I'm sorry, I, I said I would make a motion to, I guess you'd call it approve or recommend to council. Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Resolution.
Recommend to council.
1196, as stated in the staff write-up.
Okay. A recommendation for, or a motion to approve of the recommendation to city council as, as, as contained herein. So we have a motion?
I'd second that motion.
And a second.
Can you just restate the motion? The resolution number is 1196.
Yes, resolution 1196, as stated herein.
Was that sufficient clarification? Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote, all in favor of passing the motion?
Aye.
Aye. How do you post? Okay, number five passes as a recommendation to city council for 1196. Thank you. Item number six, monthly progress report on development allotments. And with that, we'll go to the final public comment, item number seven on the agenda. No action can be taken on matters raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action can be taken. Each person has up to five minutes to speak at the Each person has up to five minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. Comments made during public comment period of the agenda may be on any subject. All remarks shall be addressed to the planning commission as a whole, not to any individual member of the planning commission audience or city staff. And the number will be 702-589-9629. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and call this meeting complete. Thank you.